I had to hear me.
John, did you hear me? Was that you knocked on the marcel? I'm gonna put it in front of your car.
She's joking.
I'm not joking, I'm serious.
Alright, the expenses so far. Ladies and gentlemen. The expenses so far on the hurricane expenditures. Uh. Plumbing seventeen hundred dollars. American fire sprinkler fifty one hundred dollars. Uh, fire ranger for the fire extinguishers two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Russell pool for the outdoor lights. Um, was one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars for the indoor pool lights.
Wait, 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 Dan. I thought we were on hurricane. This has nothing to do with hurricane, does it?
We haven't, we haven't come up with numbers yet. This was expenditures over the summer.
But it's not this item. The item is hurricane. This isn't hurricane. Let's get, let's talk about hurricanes first.
Maybe they still, maybe you owe that money to those people.
That's the next item, I think. Right, because when I see plumbing, I see fire, all these things are different items. I'm just talking about hurricane right now. Alright, Dan, can you, can you just do the hurricane stuff right now? This is the other item.
Uh, Home Depot for, this is for, uh, equipment for the parts of the fences that were basically put up. I know they're not the way we want them yet, but to get the, uh, at least get them back up. There was one bill for, uh, ninety-eight dollars and two cents. Uh, another Home Depot bill for
Three forty-three.
Three forty-three fifty.
What was that for?
That's for, that's also from Home Depot for hardware that was needed to put, at least get the fences standing again before we go out and buy all the fencing because the fences that came down cannot be put back in properly.
The one at the pool is over.
Right, that's, yeah, all of that's gotta be replaced. We haven't gotten no, down to that part yet of buying notes materials. Uh, so far for the cleanup on the trees, it was fifteen thousand ten dollars.
For what?
To cut off the trees and clean up.
When?
Then why is it still like this?
This is what the total bill is going to be.
So, we, we paid them already?
No, we have not paid them already. But I have the invoice because
Everybody, no interruptions from now on, no interruptions from now on. And Dan, do not address anybody in the audience unless they address the board. That's it.
Um. This was not a hurricane bill. This was over the summer. So far, those are the only bills that we've accumulated for the hurricane cleanup.
What was the ninety-eight dollars for?
Hardware from Home Depot.
From what?
To go towards the repair of the fences.
Okay, so the first two items were about the fence.
Right. And then the third one was part of the contract that we had signed in advance to clean up the, uh, to do the tree, uh, tree cleanup after the hurricane.
Okay, um, so, and didn't you say that there was, uh, something that we think was damaged in the pool that we're replacing apart?
We replaced the pump, but we haven't received that.
It was hurricane related?
Yes.
How, how was it hurricane?
No.
It was, it was a, uh, a spike in the power. And because of that, it, it, uh, caused the, uh, motor to, uh,
Have a problem. Okay, um, now
The cost of that is, is going to be, uh, three thousand three hundred dollars because it's a brand-new motor.
Okay, but that's, uh, we don't have the invoice yet, right?
No.
So we'll prove that.
And we don't, we haven't gotten the invoice yet from, uh, the electrical that, uh, we had the problem with, uh, Orleans. But that's going to be, it was fourteen hundred dollars for the one apartment that they had to redo the, uh, the panel, and it's about a thousand dollars for the, uh, work that was done on the, uh, the main, uh, circuit break for that, for the building.
Okay, but so far, all we have that we can approve right now are the three items that you were at, the fifteen thousand and and the Home Depot items. Okay. So, do we have a motion just to approve those expenses for those hurricane repairs?
Can somebody on the board wake up, please, and do this? Hello, good morning.
Anybody wanna make that motion?
I second it.
Who made the motion? Doug made the motion. Second? That, that was Louis, second to him. Okay. Uh, any objection hearing none is approved? Okay, I want, I wanted to just, uh, let everybody know that, um, our insurance agent, Alan Adams, came and met with Dan, uh, to go over procedures for, uh, hurricane damage repair, et cetera. And, um, what his suggestion was is that we had, we documented each every hurricane-related expense and reported to the insurance carrier. Now, um, what you need to understand about insurance is that we have a deductible.
Ten thousand dollars?
Which is typical.
Ten thousand?
No, it's five, no, it's five. It's five percent of the estimated valuation of, uh, the building and it's per building. So if the, I don't know what the evaluation is of, of, maybe ten million, I don't know.
Uh, eight million, approximately eight million per building.
Eight million. If it were ten million, it would be five hundred thousand deductible. It's a little less than that, so it's like, alright, take it four hundred thousand dollars deductible. Per building, right? So in order for the insurance to kick in, we would have to meet that whatever four hundred thousand dollars per building damage. We're nowhere near that back up, you know, nowhere near that in terms of damage.
Well, maybe when Tony and I sweep up, we can build that up a little bit.
Right, so, but the insurance agent is still recommending that we document and that we report them anyway because it's an, it's a per-year deductible. Uh, and hurricane season isn't over yet, and God forbid, you know, we have another hurricane.
But it goes for the following year.
No, no, it's this year only.
It's only this year, it's a calendar year.
It's this year only, this calendar year. Right. So if hurricane, we have another, what, month and a half, two months of hurricane season. So he's recommending that we report everything now to the carrier so that if we have another hurricane as a category four or five, then all of this will go toward the deductible. And then, you know, we might need it if it's, well, God forbid it happens, but that's what he's recommending. Um, so, Dan, is that what we're gonna, what we're gonna do? Okay.
Yeah, we still have roofies that are coming out because there were some roofing, uh, problems that the maintenance people aren't, uh, capable of taking care of. So all of those bills as, as they come in, they're going into a folder, and then I'll be turning that all over to the insurance company.
Can I ask a question, John? The, uh, the tree cutting people, how much was that bill to cut?
Fifteen, fifteen thousand?
No, prior, was that fifteen thousand?
No, fourteen thousand to do the trimming.
To do the trimming. Of course, they're not finished with that, right?
Right.
Oh, 'cause I know my area wasn't done.
Okay, okay, wait a minute. How much, what percentage of it was done approximately?
About fifty percent.
Okay, so in that case, what, what are we going, okay.
Seventy-five hundred.
What, what did we pay them already for the, for the first job?
We haven't paid the maintenance for the tree trimming.
Okay, so this fifteen thousand substitutes the fourteen thousand.
The fifteen thousand is for the cleanup.
Okay, so where, where does the, the original trimming come in?
Well, we'll have to pay them for the first half that they did. And I'll, and I'll speak, I'll speak to them about
If we approved at fourteen thousand, we don't pay them fourteen thousand, we pay them
I would say that we're probably gonna pay them half.
Probably?
Because it'd only be done, half of the, of the property. I haven't spoken to them about that yet.
Alright.
I'm trying to get them out here to clean up, and I'll, I'll worry about that bill.
Alright, got it.
Is that, is that an additional fifteen thousand that we owe them?
No, it's gonna be seven thousand.
The fourteen thousand dollars was due for them to come out and trim the trees.
Okay.
Okay. Because of the storm, they were only about able to do fifty percent of the property.
Less than fifty percent, I saw that.
The fifteen thousand that I mentioned was what it cost for them to do the total cleanup. When they're finished, that's what we will owe them for the cleanup.
When they're finished.
When they're finished of the whole property. Take all the debris away, all the branches, all the logs and everything else, and clean up all the leaves.
That's after I shovel.
Um, yeah. Okay.
Great. Uh, real quick.
Yeah, I understand. You're saying there's a four hundred thousand deductible.
Per building.
It's twelve buildings, so you're saying theoretically it would be four point eight million?
Four, right.
It, it, well, that's if every building were, were designated, yeah.
To the max. So, I, I'm curious, what kind of insurance policy, I guess you know, it was ten years ago. We had like a seven million dollar assessment. Obviously, we didn't have a four hundred thousand dollar deductible.
I don't, that was
But this is, but this is a north insurance, this is a
But, but, but apparently, this is typical for insurance policies.
Is that all-inclusive? That not just the roof, that's any damage in the roof?
I guess when, you know
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's any damage to the building.
So theoretically, with most damage, if you had a category five, and you had a max out of the deductible on each building, and twelve buildings including the clubhouse, that would be close to five million. That would be a
Well, the clubhouse has a lower deductible.
Okay, well, in that specific.
Well, that's what they pay in Walmart. That's what they do.
Something like that.
That's what they pay for Walmart.
I guess it was.
They pay more than that.
Yeah, they pay for Walmart.
We had like, we had a seven million dollar assessment.
Right, right, okay, um, so, the, the other thing that, uh, he recommends, that the insurance agent recommends is that we, um, I received an email from him yesterday. Let me just load it here.
What happens if I had a
Yeah, he's recommending that the, the association have a roofing engineer inspect the roofs for any potential Irma damage that could be unknown at this time. Now, um, as you may recall, a few meetings, oh, actually, the last meeting, we approved, uh, an engineer to inspect all our roofs for about, I think it was eighteen hundred dollars, something like that.
Ninety, ninety change.
So, um, that was done just before the hurricane. It was completed like a month or so before the hurricane. So if there was any damage or compromise to the hur, to the roofs because of the hurricane, if they were compromised anyway because of the hurricane, we, we would know if we did another inspection. Um, so that might
Why would you have to have We had leaks in the, in the Marcella building. Why would you have another inspection if, if Mr. A said that four buildings were not really up to code?
No, no, not up to code, no.
They had leaks, they, they needed to be repaired, and then you had the hurricane, and those four buildings had, then those four buildings will be under the, uh, insurance.
But here's the thing, we, there may be, like you said, uh, unknown, damage is unknown at this time. A, an inspector, a, an engineer, I mean, a, uh, professional roofing engineer inspector would be able to find, uh, unknown damage, which then could also be applied towards that deductible. So, um, my question to the board is, should we get this engineer back and inspect the roofs again so we have a before and an after picture to present to the insurance company?
My only comment to that is, we did the inspection in July, and it was out of Friday, or this past Monday, that we finally got
But that's irrelevant.
But I'm saying, it took him two months to get us a
To me, that's irrelevant. The, the, the real, uh, important point is that the inspection was completed just before the hurricane. So we have a snapshot of the condition of our roofs just before the hurricane, and if we do it again, whether it takes them one month or whatever, it would still, it would be in a snapshot right after the hurricane.
Excuse me, John, could you tell me what condition before the hurricane, my building, uh, the Bordeaux roof?
I, I, I don't recall them offhand. Most of them were pretty high. There were a few that were, uh, Bordeaux, I don't think was one of them that were, um, you know, that had some concerns.
Because I looked for mold, damage, and leaks and less.
Bordeaux, I don't recall Bordeaux being one of them, but we'll look at those again. There were like two or three roofs that, that were
Well, we have ten reports of people in the Marcella building that have
Yeah, we, we have all those reports.
Including molds, John.
Right, we have all those reports. So that's why, um
They said they've been calling and nobody does anything.
Nobody has been calling.
And a lot of them are renters.
Who are they calling?
They said they called the office.
Well, they're not, they're not speaking to me.
Well, I personally tell them to call units.
Please, because whenever somebody calls and tells me they have mold, I get a remediation company out the same day to inspect it.
Well, Monique, on the second floor, she's been complaining about mold for a long time now.
And Monique has had three inspections in that apartment, and each one has been attributed to the fact that she does not use her air conditioner.
But listen, the third floor above her had leaks. They have, she's a renter.
I had three companies come in and verify it's because she doesn't use her air conditioner.
But the person above her, the one with the leak.
Alright, we're, we're on hurricane right now. Um, right, so
Hurricane there, but that roof, that roof needs to be inspected.
Um. Well, as I said before, the insur, the insurance agent is recommending that we have another inspection. We just had an inspection. This company, I think it would be an apples-to-apples comparison if you use the same company again, regardless of whether due to the muck or whatever. Um, I did speak to the, to the gentleman who said, you know, that there were several, uh, very hot days, and then raining, and then whatever. So, um, but that's fine. That's, that's actually, uh, something I would like to see if the board agrees with that. Um, Marc, Marc, well, Marcio and Murat are both engineers. Uh, first, Murat, what do you think of that?
Idea. I think it's a good idea. Or perhaps something.
Yeah, yeah, it is a good idea, yes, you know. He's going to, you know, represent the, the insurance company, right, the carrier, whatever. So it's a good way to represent our damage, I mean. And, and I don't think it's going to cost us, you know, initial inspection.
Right, actually, what, what happened, um, because I looked at the reports and there was actually one building missing. It, the proposals were twelve, uh, and they forgot to, to inspect the clubhouse. So, um, we would, uh, I, I spoke to the gentleman probably after we received the reports, and I noted, I noted that. And he said, okay, um, we can come back and do that one for free. So if we do re-inspect all the buildings, we have to deduct that, um, one twelfth from the price for the re-inspection. Uh, for the, so we could do the clubhouse for the first time. Anyway, uh, Marcio, you're the other engineer, um, on the board. What do you think about that? Marcio?
I, I want to, I'm unbiased and opinionated. I am terrified of assessments. I would do anything possible to never have an assessment again. So, I want to use my own eyes. I'm, I'm still, I'm still in both, but I'll do that one first. So, I think next month, I can see it properly, and I can actually, you know, never judge, but, yeah. Be active and actually go look at it.
Okay, but, but, um, but are you experienced in roof engineering inspections?
No.
No.
He's a maritime engineer.
When you talk, nobody can hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Marcio, and I kinda have like the same concerns, but, uh, Dan sent us all those inspection reports a week or so ago, and if you noticed, there's not, I, I saw only like a few roofs that he, um, cited as, um, you know, having concerns about. The rest, he gave us pretty good grades, so he's not, it looks like he's not an inspector that's looking to make a buck besides which he's strictly an engineer, he's not a con, a, a general contractor. Um, where there's a conflict, and that's why I specifically, if you remember that meeting, I said, I don't want anybody to inspect the roof who might have a conflict of interest because they're also a general contractor and maybe looking for work. This guy, uh, this company, headed by, um, what's his name, Scott Little, they, they do not have any kind of axe to grind because they, they are not a general contractor. They cannot do any work, uh, that they can recommend to themselves. That's why I would feel, uh, comfortable having them come back, and, and at least that way we would have, uh, something very official to show the insurance company. Uh, that, okay. Right, so, anyway, would, would you like to make that motion then to, uh, to have them come out and re-inspect all the buildings with the one twelfth discount for not completing the clubhouse the first time around?
Yes, just do it.
Okay, Marcio made the motion. Murat, would you like a second motion?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so. Any, any discussion on the board on that one for the roof inspections? Again, this is, what's the company's name again? Tri, it's Tri County Engineers?
Yes.
Okay, it's for Tri County Engineers, and again, it was, uh, it's in the minutes, right?
Scott something.
Uh, Scott Little. I'm looking for the minutes because it tells us how much.
I have, I have his card.
Nineteen fifty. It, no, the, the price was nineteen fif, one thousand nine hundred and fifty. So eleven twelfths of that would be, it's like eighteen Okay, so eleven twelfths of nineteen, I think it's like eighteen sixty something. Seven, no, it's like, it would be seventeen something. Seventeen hundred something, okay? Seventeen one? No, seventeen hundred, okay. So there's a motion and a second on the table. Um, any more discussion? Any questions from the membership?
You know, there's, uh, there's some tiles around the pool area for, on the roof that are missing.
Okay. On the roof, in the roof area, okay, and the pool area.
Shingles, shingles.
Shingles, thank you, thank you.
Uh, that would be looked at too, right?
Yes, it's on one, it's over the indoor pool and on the side of the cabanas.
He's missing a lot of shingles.
There's shingles all over the property.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on this, and, uh, any objection hearing none is approved? Okay. On the roof inspections, um, re-inspections. Uh, what's the next item?
Plumbing repair.
Plumbing repair, okay, that's where you have this list here.
Yeah, that was over the summer. That was seventeen hundred dollars.
Can, can you say, can we be vendor? Vendor was, no. The vendor? A, A one
A one Florida plumbing.
Seventeen, seventeen hundred dollars for
Seventeen hundred dollars.
St. Mary's plumbing?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the plumbing, I, let's just approve that since we have a, is that the only plumbing issue that was done?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion and a second on plumbing? Repairs? Anybody wanna make that motion on plumbing repair? Okay, uh
Roy Moore.
Doug made the motion.
By the way, Roy Moore, one in Alabama. No, no, that wasn't, that was Bannon's guy.
Okay. The next item was the fire sprinklers. Wait, wait, there's no second on the plumbing. Murat, did you second that?
I seconded.
Okay, you did, okay. No objection hearing none. Um, American fire sprinkler. That was, I'm sorry, the next item is, uh, American fire sprinkler. Fire sprinkler repairs and extinguisher inspections, okay, yes, right.
Fire, the fire sprinkler repairs were five thousand one hundred dollars. And the fire extinguisher inspection was two thousand eight hundred fifty dollars thirty-four cents.
Okay, do we have a motion? Can, can you just say, it was American fire sprinkler and fire ranger, right, for the
Yes, fire ranger for the fire extinguisher.
Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, another motion.
Murat made the motion second. Anyone second? Marcio seconded. Any objection? Hearing none approved. Uh, next item.
And John, in our building in the Edelweiss, that fire alarm is constantly going off for the last two months.
Is that one of them that is gonna be with that?
Uh, that's another problem.
Two months. Comcast.
The problem is that the, the phone line from Comcast is not sending the signal to the monitoring station, and I'm trying like hell to get Comcast out here. They came out last Sunday. They came to the gate, the guard at the gate didn't know that they, whether they should be allowed in. He called his chief of security, and the chief of security said, "Do not let them in."
That was Austin?
That was Austin.
Which reminds me, we
Now I'm trying to get Comcast back out again.
Which reminds me, John, we do not have rovers. I mean, really, we do not have proper security here.
Could we get through this?
Excuse me, I live here, you don't live here, I live here.
Okay.
So these are my problems. You don't live here.
But it's not on the agenda.
Well, you know what? That's too bad. I want security, and it's not here. There's no security here at night.
Well, then you need to speak to Austin.
Excuse me, you're, you're letting him get the bills. Don't put everything on Austin.
I have no control over Austin.
Well, let's get, let's get the, you know what, John? I want security here. And I live here, you don't.
But I care too.
Well, you know what? I, I'd like to see how much you care.
Okay, um, what I have on my list? Pool upgrades, floor repairs. Uh, the outdoor pool LED fixtures was one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. The indoor LED fixtures was two thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
And these are both Russell pool?
Both for Russell pool, yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? Doug moved it, um, second, any second?
Yeah.
Murat seconded. Any objections? No objection, approved. Uh, and finally
Finally, well, this actually goes back to the hurricane
Wait, AC repairs and replacements, what's that? Was it AC repairs?
Hold on a second, it's not on this, this.
Is that the pump, the outside water pool by any chance? Is that still not working?
Well, I see, I see it back here. I see, uh, PMS AC, um, invoice for one seventy-five.
Right, one seventy-five, two twenty-five.
Edelweiss. And then two twenty-five also for Edelweiss.
And then St. Mary's, eighteen seventy-five. And
And then three ninety-five.
Three ninety-five for Bordeaux.
Two eighty-five for Nottingham.
Two eighty-five for Nottingham, and one sixty-five for Nottingham. And St. Mary's, one sixty-five. Uh, St. Mary's, another one sixty-five. And that will do it.
Okay, so, uh, for all those various AC repairs and replacements for the buildings mentioned by PMS AC, do we have a motion to approve, ratify those expenditures? Motion to Marcio moved it. Doug seconded. Any objection? Hearing none. Okay, next item is, uh, for these electricity repairs.
Yeah, that, that actually goes back to that hurricane repair that was put on the wrong list.
Okay.
These are all, these are all the ones that are, were just done recently.
These would also be These would also be submitted to the carrier, correct?
That's correct, yes.
It's a direct result of the hurricane
Yes.
Lightning strike, and, uh, and what's the expenses on that?
Uh, two thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, Watts new electric.
And how much?
Full of two thousand six hundred and sixty-five fifty.
Two thousand two hundred and sixty-five fifty.
Two thousand six hundred and sixty-five fifty.
Okay, um, again, that was to, uh, replace the, or to repair the damage that was caused by hurricane that knocked out the power for several units, uh, in the Orleans. Watts new electric, two, twenty-six sixty-five fifty. Is there a motion to approve? We have board member who is perfectly affected, so I'm sure he'll make the motion. Um, but, anyone wanna make a motion? Murat, you wanna make a motion instead? You don't have to recede your thoughts, it's not your personal Murat made the motion, and Doug seconded it. And the objection, hearing none is approved. Okay, what's the next item?
Elevator contract?
Elevator contract, okay. Doug, uh, Dan, go ahead.
Okay, as I said, uh, we have a problem with, uh, Or, um, Oracle. Uh, we are going to be sending them a termination letter. Uh, company Express Elevator has said that between October first and the end of May, when Oracle's contract would, uh, expire, that they will only charge us for the parts that they need to do repairs with. Any, uh, labor, any time that they have to come here, overtime, or whatever, it's all gonna be on them. The only thing we'll be paying for is parts.
Do you have to sign a contract with them for that?
Yes. And the, the board has, has the contract. The contract would be a two-year contract that, uh, would automatically roll over after the two years unless we give them ninety days notice.
Ninety days at any time, or ninety days just before renewal?
Ninety days before the end of the contract.
So if we wanted to have them a year from now, we would not be able to?